Good evening, welcome to this week's meeting of the Norton Board of Selectmen. Today is the 28th of June 2018. Along with us tonight, we have members of the Planning Board also in attendance, along with Town Manager Michael Units and all members that are present. Vaiable agents, please. Vaiable agents?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, our which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地， and just as for all.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, would you like to call your meeting into order?
Yes, for the record, we have a quorum of the Norton Planning Board. We have four of our five actual members, and we have a statement from Tim Griffin, who couldn't be at the appropriate time. I'll read that into the record.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a meeting tonight to discuss the appointment of two persons to the Planning Board. I've already lost my paperwork. So, just for the record, Mr. Michael Tool has pulled out of the, and has reconsidered. He would like to be more involved in the economic development, so he has withdrawn his name. And so, we still have five members, five people who are interested in being appointed. I think we have five very good candidates, so it's going to be a tough one to make that decision. And also, I would like to thank all five for volunteering, and hopefully, if this doesn't work out, you'll get some consideration to join one of our other very important committees. Before I forget too, I'd like to recognize Tabitha Hawkins hiding over there in the corner. I believe this may be our last meeting with you, so thank you very much for everything you've done for the town. You've done a lot of things, you've put us in a new direction, and I know that, I appreciate all your effort and what you've tried to accomplish in your very short tenure.
Thank you, I wish.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is put all five names in nomination, and then we'll go around the table and we'll vote. We can do it one of two ways. We can go one vote at a time, and we can vote two at the same time. It's something we can discuss, or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, mechanically, I was trying to think of the best way to do it. I would like to, however, create a distinction. Although both whoever the selected candidates will have to run for the position in next April, one position is a three-year term, and the other is a one-year term.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it would make sense to choose, we're going to have to assign a term to, or a candidate to the three-year term and a candidate to the one-year term. I don't know if it makes sense to vote on those positions separately.
Yeah.
In other words, nominate people for the three-year term and nominate whoever else is left.
That's kind of a strange, yeah, if you think about it, because even though there's the three-year term, we're still only going to be able to serve until the next election.
Right, and they're somewhat serving as, the three-year term would be somewhat serving as incumbent. Be a nice problem to have, to have a contested race, that, you know, the incumbent may have a slight advantage, but maybe I'm wishful thinking.
Well, then, we probably should take them separately. We could do maybe the three-year term first, and then the one-year term separate, second. Okay. The five people that I'm going to put in nomination are Orin Segal, Alan Boulay, David Heaney, Renee Dealey, and Julie Oakley. I got your name right, right? Okay. Now, I got your maiden name. Just want to make sure. We've done interviews with all of them, and what I'd like to do is go around the table, and we'll keep, you want to keep track? And there's nine of us, so we need fives for the nomination. It's up to you folks, I mean, if you want to vote, I think we should vote, but if we reach the five, I mean, it's entirely up to us, so. I would like to start off with the Planning Board. I'd like you folks to nominate your candidate first, and then we'll go around the table until we get an opinion.
Well, I don't know that, we haven't taken a formal vote, this is the first time we've had a quorum, so, again, in deference to people's views, can we maybe just have a discussion on each candidate?
Sure.
You know?
Would you, before you get into that, would you prefer it, you take the vote? You go, so your candidate?
Well, no, I don't, well, I think we can just discuss the candidates.
Okay.
And we're now, in essence, a committee of nine, and, you know, whether it's Planning Board, who votes for a candidate one way, or Selectmen, it really doesn't matter, it's whoever gets the most of the nine votes.
Okay, you have the four.
And the only thing, if I could, I mentioned it earlier, Tim Griffin was not able to be here. If I could just read into the meeting some of his thoughts that he shared in an email. We are very fortunate to have such a good crop of potential candidates, however, excuse me, however, however, I feel there's a, there is a very large divide in terms of experience between my first two and the other three candidates. I specifically want to make sure that everyone has read Julie's resume, since I know it wasn't in the initial packet posted online. His ranked choices, number one, Julie Oakley, strong direct planning experience, which will be even more critical as we transition the town planner position, would also add a female voice and perspective to our discussions. Number two is Orin Segal, extensive real estate experience, a current strong voice on local issues. He makes reference to Michael Tool, but Michael isn't a candidate any longer. Four, David Heaney, active in town politics, would be a good member, but doesn't have the direct experiences, number one. And number two, expressed interest in other positions. And Renee Dealey, number, in essence, four, active in town politics, would be a good member.
Good, thank you. So, discussion. I want you folks to go first, anyone wants to?
Steve.
Any opinions, and we haven't had, some of you haven't had a chance to discuss the candidates. Hopefully, you had a chance to probably watch them at home at TV, the interviews, and try to figure out the best candidates that you feel would do the job for you. The one thing I was concerned about from the get-go was I wanted to make sure you four had the opportunity to pick a person you felt could complement you guys, and make you a stronger and better Planning Board, so. Mr. Hornsby, you got something?
You know, I concur with Tim, with Julie as the number one candidate. I think the experience alone will help, and bringing a female voice onto the board will definitely help us.
We understand how that works.
Yeah.
You got the lucky to have me.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My two recommendations for the addition to the Planning Board would be Mr. Orin Segal, as well as Mr. Dave Heaney. I do this for demographic and geographically. One resides in the western part of town, the other resides in the eastern. Orin has just had the honor of retirement, so he is a member of the Red Mill Village, and we definitely have that opportunity to join on the Planning Board, as well as Mr. Dave Heaney, who's very active in local politics and the local scene. So, my recommendations would be Mr. Orin Segal and Dave Heaney.
Thank you.
And for myself, I kind of narrowed it down to top three, in my view. First one being Ms. Oakley, her experience in that planning world, and working within some of the state and municipal organizations through her experience, I think would be a great fit for our Planning Board. Mr. Segal, similarly, I think his background, different from probably any of our backgrounds with legal experience, would be an added plus. And as Frank had noted, the fact that he lives in Red Mill Village, a representation from that part of town, would be certainly a plus for us. The third candidate I had is Ms. Dealey. I actually know her from prior employment, she was a colleague of mine, so I know how she works, I know how she operates in meetings and settings. She has a great professional background, and I think she would be a strong candidate as well, so those would be my three choices.
Thank you.
The first position for me was relatively easy. Julie Oakley has, again, this isn't an indictment of anyone else, her career path has just given her skills that are different than those of the other candidates. You know that our previous chairman, Joanne, is an engineer, and that skill is useful. Speaking for myself, and I think it's somewhat reflective of the skills of others, we're not trained engineers. There are things on plans that get submitted that may not be as obvious to us as it would to an engineer, so I thought, you know, Julie's skills, the timing was perfect, in terms of what we could use as a member of the board. The, and this is going to be a little strange, but my other choice, and again, my other choice, I would be, I think I said this the night we met these folks, my other choice would be whoever gets pulled out of a hat. I mean, these are good people, so.
We don't have any hats with us tonight.
Well, the point is, I wouldn't walk away disappointed in any shape or form if any of the other four people were selected. But I was impressed by Ms. Dealey. I, as a very young person, had the occasion to appear before a city council, and was made to feel quite foolish. And that experience never left me, and I swore, and I never had an expectation of her being part of a board or committee, that I would never do that to someone else. And I was impressed by her demeanor. To me, it's as important how you say something as what you say. And I think for that reason, I was impressed with her, so those would be my two candidates.
Okay. Anyone on the board? I know we've had some discussion, but anyone want to add anything to it?
Just that, I think, just like everybody else, to me, Ms. Oakley was my number one choice. I had my number two and three. I also liked Mr. Segal, but I also liked Mr. Boulay, only because of his background. And I know the extent of my Planning Board knowledge, just watching you people on TV sometimes, and seeing you pulling out plans, it's just that I felt in his line of work, he'd actually understand what he was looking at, where I wouldn't. So, that was what gave him a step up in my mind.
Okay. Mr. Steele?
Mr. Chairman, so, like everybody else, my obvious first choice was also Julie Oakley, and I agree with Joe, second choice easily could have been pulled out of the hat, everybody is well and qualified, and I think whoever ends up on the board is, we've already moved forward with the board, right? So, I went with Julie Oakley because of experience, and my second choice would be Dave Heaney, and that's based on, even though he doesn't necessarily have the Planning Board experience, he has been involved in a lot of issues in town, and I feel that he has a very positive outlook, and I think that he would be a fair and enthusiastic productive member of the board.
Anyone else? I would echo the Julie, I'm not sure what your last name is, but Julie Oakley. I called her by, for you guys that weren't here, I called her by her maiden name during the question. So, I think she's got a lot of qualifications, and definitely would be an addition to your board. And again, the drop in the hat, I mean, I'm still sitting here between two or three of them, really, I'm not sure what to do, so. But anyway, I'm just very pleased and excited that so many people are volunteering to do this. I think it was maybe Joe's plea at town meeting that really helped us, but I think for the most part, it shows that there are some very qualified people in town that can help us do a lot of our jobs that we need to get done. And I'll say it again, whatever, if you don't get on the board, please don't fade into the woodwork. We need you folks to help us with other stuff, too, so, and keep this town going in the right direction. Okay. With that, I guess we're ready to vote. I've got to kind of, kind of.
Did you ask, did Mike already?
Hmm?
Did you ask Mike?
Yeah.
All right, I didn't get, what did you say?
Didn't voice an opinion.
No, I had, yeah, it does.
He forgot my, he forgot my word, too.
Are you doing the vote?
I was tallying the.
No, no, we're going to do a vote now. We're going to do an official vote, so all that stuff you wrote down.
Is a shredder out in the hallway?
We have a new recording secretary, we're still breaking him in, but he's getting better at it.
All right, there weren't six Oakleys, there weren't, I'll forget that.
Okay, so, let's go with the three-year position first, and we'll go around the table, and we'll keep a tally on who to nominate. Again, automatic nomination for Orin Segal, Alan Boulay, David Heaney, Renee Dealey, and Julie Oakley. And I'll sit with you, Mr. Hornsby.
For the three here, I'd say Julie Oakley.
Okay. Mr. Durant?
Orin Segal.
Hornsby? What did he say? What did you say?
Orin.
Orin. So, we have one Julie, one Orin, okay. Mr. Fernandez?
Julie.
Julie. Mr. Jessix?
Yes, Julie Oakley.
Julie. Mr. Fighter?
Orin Segal.
Mrs. Steele?
Julie.
Julie Oakley. Mr. Salvo?
Julie.
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 Mr. Brammo? We have six. And I two will vote for Julie, so we have seven votes in favor of Julie, so congratulations, and welcome to the board. Thank you. Okay, next, I keep, keep really good track of this one, this could be interesting.
I think I already had that, so, go ahead.
No, you don't. So, next, we'll go around the table again, and we'll pick for the one-year position on the, on the board, keeping in mind that, again, these positions have to be, you have to run for reelection any, next year, anyway, so, just to be aware of that. So, I'll sit again with Mr. Hornsby.
Orin Segal.
Orin Segal.
Renee Dealey.
Mr. Durant?
Orin.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Don't get ahead of me. Mr. Fernandez?
Renee Dealey.
Mr. Jessix?
Yes, Renee Dealey.
Mr. Fighter?
Dave Heaney.
Dave Heaney.
Dave Heaney.
Mrs. Steele? Heaney. Mr. Salvo?
Mr. Segal.
Mr. Segal.
Orin Segal.
You want for Segal? Okay, and I will, you're also good, I really don't know what to do. I'm going to go for Mr. Segal. Okay, Mr. Segal, one-year term, thank you very much. And again, we'd like to really thank you all for volunteering and stepping forward. At our next meeting, we're going to be announcing a number of positions that are open in town, so hopefully, you'll consider, if you weren't voted in, to please consider the appoint, one of the other appointments. Mr. Fernandez, anything else?
Two things, though. For the Planning Board, we're going to adjourn to upstairs to finish off some business, and I'd ask Mike, do they need anything from us to let the town clerk know, so that they perhaps get sworn in tonight and be ready for?
I, no, I'll have to give her a formal letter that will go to them, let them know they're appointed, and they can.
One of the things we're going to decide.
When's your next meeting?
We don't know, that's part of what we're going to discuss.
I mean, you can do anything like that with them to plan your next meeting, because we'll definitely have the letters to them before then.
I'm just trying to save them.
Yeah. Town clerk's not here now, so anyways.
It's the units. If they sit in, as long as they want to take participation in the vote, to see what's going on.
Yeah, but they, they should be sworn in by.
Okay. If you want to come up, at least discuss our next meeting, hopefully that is convenient for you folks. Thank you very much, thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Glad to see we're back up and running.
Thanks to all the volunteers that came forward. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, under license and permit, with the application of Gary H. Hahney Jr. for a one-day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everland Park, Saturday, July 21st, 2018, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. for a private. You have a copy of the letter in your file, signed off by the Department Heads. I'll give it a minute.
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Okay. So, again, this is for a one-day beer and wine, up to 20 to 30 people, and it's going to be, has been signed off by all the department heads, so. Anyone have any questions?
I'm hoping that we approve the application for a one-day beer and wine license for July 21st, 2018, for Gary M. Hahney, and that's from 1:00 to p.m., 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Everland Park.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Fighter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Salvo?
Yes.
Mr. Brammo?
Yes.
And I will, yes, also. Okay. Under announcements, Mr. Salvo.
The Charlie Pond cleanup will be June 30th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. December will be at the parking lot, at 3:30, 60 Colony Road, Route 123, that'd be the tavern on the hill, parking lot. And that is this Saturday, at 9:00 a.m. to noon. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brammo?
Just want to wish everybody a happy, safe Fourth of July.
Yeah, we'll be back.
Hope everyone has a wonderful time, hope we have nice, beautiful weather. Where they're talking, looks like it might be a steamy one.
Yeah.
So, that's all I've got.
Okay. Mrs. Steele?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Larry?
I just want to echo Brad's comment, thank you.
Okay, next we have, we have a notification from the Massachusetts State Water Commission that an application for a penal license has been received for Jasmine Gaden, 113 Mansfield Avenue. Again, you'll see the letter in your file. Anybody have any questions about the, really, I think it's just a notification, we don't have to take any action on it, just wanting everybody to know that we're going to consider it. Under appointments and reappointments to the Board of Committee, we do have a list of people that are being considered for reappointment. Some of them, if you're looking in the column, you're right, you'll notice that we have not either heard back from them, or they can't, they can't do it at this time, or there might be another reason for it. But we do have a number of candidates under the yes column that do want to be reappointed. So, I'm going to take it by committee or board first, and then we can, we can vote on each one as a group, unless someone decides they want to get additional information, or want to table it until our next meeting, for some reason or another. But my plan is to go by committee and try to, sort of do, address this one individually. So, under the Alternative Transportation Committee, we have Karen Cantapati, and also Scott Holman, that want to be reappointed to the Alternative Transportation Committee.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? The Board of Health at large, we have Mr. Robert Medeiris, that would like to be appointed to, reappointed to the Board of Health.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Canoe River Aquifer Committee, we have Mr. Bernard Marshall.
Second.
Motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Canoe River Aquifer Committee, we have Mr. Bernard Marshall.
Second.
Motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Conservation Commission, we have Mr. Julian Katush and Ms. Lisa Carazo.
So. Second.
Motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Conservation Commission, we have Mr. Julian Katush and Ms. Lisa Carazo.
So. Second.
Motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Council on Aging, we have three positions, we have Natalie Lima, Patricia Zwicker, and Carol McLaughlin.
So. Second.
Motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Historic District Commission, we have Mrs. Frances Shirley as a Wheaton representative, and we have Ms. Peg Dooley as the Realtor.
So. Second.
The motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. On the Historic, Historical Commission, we have Sharon Rice and Bethany Jones asking for reappointment.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Under Permanent Building Committee, we have at large, Mr. James Slattery.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On the Recreation Commission, we have Mr. Robert Kerr.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Town Common Committee, under the Fire Department, we have Mr. Paul Schlecker.
So. Second.
I'm not done yet. And.
Oh, yeah, went too fast, got another one. Sorry.
I don't know that we've had, we're not sure if we've, we have not heard back from her, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, we have a motion at this time from Mr. Paul Schlecker, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Town Common Revitalization Committee, we have Mr. Keith Silver and Mr. Paul Schlecker. Reappointment?
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the Water Budget Committee, we have Ms. Carol Zwicker for reappointment.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. And on the Zoning Board of Appeals, even though it's not checked off, we do have Mr. Tom, Thomas Noel, and Mr. Lucas Wyseak.
So. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank God. Thank you. There are a lot of dedicated people, do a lot of great things for the town, and just it's a great opportunity to recognize them. I went to a meeting last night at the Council on Aging, to have their appreciation data for their volunteers that help raise funds and do things, a lot of things that people don't know about. You know, without the support of the volunteer staff over there, it really wouldn't be having all the programs and everything that goes on over there, it just wouldn't be, it just wouldn't be happening. They presented me with a check, I tried to cash it today, but nobody would take it. It's made out to the town of Norton, and it's for $50,275.99. This is the amount of volunteer hours that they have, they have kept record of, that if we had to hire someone to do the job, this is what they would have had to pay out, just in volunteer dollars. It's their opinion, because a lot of people don't sign in, I guess they have a register book, I want people volunteering. It appears that they feel that it would be at least double that, if not more.
Well.
The town says by having these active volunteers, like every other department we have here, too, we have a lot of, a lot of people volunteer, but I just thought it was, it's a great thing, it's wonderful, all these people doing that volunteer work, and they do so many different things, too. Okay. Skipping right along here, huh? And the warrants and minutes. Entertainer motion to approve the invoice warrant of AP 52 dated June 28, 2018, in the amount of $64,028.76.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. And we have minutes from July 13th, 2017, you have a copy of it in your packet. Everyone had a chance to take a look at it? Okay. Entertainer motion to approve the minutes, July 13th, 2017, as written.
Second.
Motion, the second, further discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have one present, and four in favor. Selective report mail, anything? Mr. Salvo?
Hello.
Brammo? Mrs. Steele?
Flyder?
Mr. Units, you got anything you want to bring up?
Nope.
You don't? We're in a vacation mode.
I, I'll just mention, we had a good meeting the other night, we had about 30 people here to go over how the budget's produced, and I'll give you, I'll get you all the information that we talked about at the meeting, so you can have it.
Very good. Okay, we are reminding people that we are looking for appointing Economic Development Director, and we have all that information here, if anyone wants any information, they can check with Mr. Units, or the Town Hall, we can get some information as far as the qualifications go, is that online?
It must be online somewhere.
Yeah. We have a wonderful Mass School Building Authority basically approving the grant that we requested, and we'll be dealing with that, I believe, on the next, next week, we have to take action on it? Some sort? I don't know what's right, but we'll deal with that, we have to on the next one. And, I think that's all I have. Anything else come before the board? I would again, reiterate what my colleagues have said tonight, wish everyone a very happy, safe July 4th, and we'll be back on July 12th for our next meeting, I believe we have a number of prior year bills we have to deal with at that meeting.
No, we, we're still, next week, we'll be going over the end of the year to see if there's any need.
Okay.
The Finance Committee may take care of any small needs with the reserve fund transfers, but if we need any inter-fund transfers, we'll be bringing it to the board on the 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I might not be there, depends how I feel, at that...
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else has anything you want to bring, bring to the board, feel free to give Mr. Units a call, and we'll make sure we get it on the agenda. Okay, with all of that, Chair entertaining motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Sorry.
The 12th is the night that we were supposed to be interviewing candidates for the IDC.
Oh, yeah.
Right, the applications are emails or letters of interest should be in by the 9th, which, is that Monday?
Yes.
How many do you have?
That's what you had said.
How many do we have so far?
Three so far.
Three? Good, okay. How many positions you have open? All of them?
We don't have a committee anymore, so five.
I thought we just reappointed two.
Oh.
And another one? Okay. All right, any other, anything else come before the board? If not, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So move. I have some good news about the land on 140.
Okay, go ahead.
Everybody's questioning with that little piece of land is doing next to auto parts.
Piece of land that was cleared, and everybody's asking why it was cleared?
Yeah, I actually meet, I met the owner last, last week, it's a 10,000 square foot lot, it's, has a capability of a building to have four stories there, which is our maximum height, whatever it is, it is buildable.
Yeah, well, that'll be a decision the Planning Board can make, with height also comes parking spaces, so I'm curious to see how they're going to find it out, isn't it?
It's actually, you put a, well, I don't think it was, he said it was, but you can put something there.
Yeah, I'm sure. That has town water and sewage.
It's a good promotion for upcoming meetings, you know, down the road.
And we did send off the letter to the town of Mansfield, we got in an opposed hotel on the corner of Eagle Bubble, sometimes wonder why they didn't come talk to us about the land in front of the TPC, because that's, that's also been approved for a hotel, but Mansfield won this time, so, you know, I'm sure it has to do with price and all that, but, well, we just sent off that letter, like the concerns we brought up at the last meeting has been, has gone off, so, we'll see what happens. Okay, one more time, anyone else have anything before the board?
Not here.
Okay, Chair entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
Can't do both.
Second.
Motion, the second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Shane.